Good afternoon and welcome to a study session for August 12th of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. We are, we're back somewhat live and some of you are watching us through Zoom. We will start, this is a study session, so we do not take public comment at our study sessions. We also don't vote on anything at our study sessions. And today's study session is about our Douglas County CARES Act allocations. And I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I hope everyone can hear me and everyone can hear me in, on the Zoom call. I'm going to say a few opening things about where we're at in the process and then I'm going to walk you through the changes we've made and then, and then hopefully we can dig into the sections. So the first thing I want to say is that I really appreciate the support of the commission and the community with this pretty difficult process. There's just simply not enough time to do this effectively and as openly as we really would have liked. And I, we've said that from the beginning and we just really appreciate the patience and understanding of our community as we try to develop these recommendations under a very tight timeline with changing, with changing parameters and guidelines. There's, there's a number of competing values in this process and there's a number of adaptive challenges. And, and we're doing our, I think our best here at the local level to try to manage that. I do think it's important to put this into perspective and we do have some information about round two that is just really beginning to come out now. And so that, I just want to stress again for the community or anybody that's listening to this, this is the first phase, the round one, which was given to counties in the state of Kansas for allocation. There are rounds two and rounds three planned by the state Spark Committee. This round will come to the county for distribution. I, I want to say that of the 105 counties in Kansas, I think there's 105 ways that these funds are being allocated. This is by no means a scientific study, but I've spoken to the other county administrators in Kansas and I can tell you that by far this is the most open process that I've seen out of any of them. The fact that we had open applications, that, that others could apply, that we have over 50 organizations that are currently in the slated to be recommended, we have over 240 programs indicates how much extensive work we have done to try to get the word out and to get a variety of stakeholders involved. Each county has, has the ability to really structure this plan the way they wanted to. My understanding and had conversations with Johnson County, no private entities will receive any of these funds in Johnson County. So every county has the ability to sort of set it up the way they wanted to. So I'm, I know it's not perfect. I know it's not ideal, but I do feel like we've done the best we could, given the timeframe we had to try to get the word out and to do this. And all things considered of the 25 million, I think we're talking about a relatively small delta here in terms of what we want to get moved around and identified. So I appreciate the community sort of understanding that bigger picture and the commission as well. And I, I think it's also important to say here, well, we had some conversation last week and we're going to have some conversation today about, you know, should more funds be allocated from one area to another? As, as we've known from this, all of these areas are related. If we don't have a, if we don't continue to see our really great low infection rates and here in Douglas County and our, our, our low level of, and our ability for our hospital to be able to respond, there's no point in trying to encourage visitors to come to our community. So it's important that our community be safe in order for our business community to thrive, thrive. The, the more we are able to control COVID-19 and manage it, the more our human service providers don't need to be stressed even beyond where they are now. So all an education as we continue to try to figure out how, how kids are going to be taught safely, it's important that they have supports in the human service network and that they also, that their parents and, and teachers are a part of our economy. So I just think it's important that these are all related, we're all in this together. And my hope is, is that at the end of this process on Friday, we can reflect a little bit about really the tremendous good that we're going to be able to do with these funds and, and try to keep our eyes a little bit on that big picture. So what I thought I would do, and I'm going to share my screen with the group, was to start off by looking at our CRF allocation reimbursement summary tab. And I thought I would walk you through what we've, where we are now and at the high level of the summary, can y'all see that? It's on the screen and it should be on your Zoom. And then talk a little bit about what we have, what staff is at this point in time proposing for reallocation. And then my thought would be to stop and then talk about RSF4 education. There's really no dollars changing around in RSF4, but there, but there's a difference of approach. So I'd like to get that out of the way, see if the commission is as supportive of that as our education partners are in K-12. And then we could jump into RSF1 where I know, I know commissioners want to really review that in detail to make sure that they understand where we are and where we need to go. So with that, I will start with this summary tab that we walked you through last week. So what you see here is a column for the agency, the amount requested, recommended is what we had last week. So that was what was recommended as of 8/5. Revised is where we stand today in 8/12. So we have made a small adjustment to the reimbursements. So that went from 1,1,988,578 down to 1,944,371. Under direct aid plans, we reduced, we made some reductions to direct aid plans and I'll go through each of those. To Douglas County, the city of Lawrence and the city of Udora, we did not make any modifications to the Baldwin City direct aid plan. For economic support function one, we were able to reallocate funds to move it from 1.2 million up to 2.2 million at this point. And I'll, I'll walk through that, it gets complicated. RSF2 has had some changes as well. It was at 11 million, 11.3 million last week and it's at 10.8 now. RSF3 has had a few changes, but it had some, some projects moved into it and some projects moved out. It is, it is still a little bit up from last week. And then education has had no changes. So then I'm going to switch to this revised proposals tab for 8/12. And walk you through, these are just proposed revisions from a staff perspective. These have had no commission input necessarily, so these are not official, they're still draft. This was simply based off of our commission meeting last week, an attempt on my part to try to, to reallocate some funds internally to get us to a better starting point for conversations about RSF1. So, related to the direct aid plans, for the Douglas County government direct aid plan, I took a general cut of $200,000. If that's where the commission wants us to stay, I will go back through and identify the specific line items that will get reduced, but I thought for purposes of this discussion today, I'll have to find it under a number of line items. So I'll do that before we submit it, but I thought I would just see where the commission was with that before I did it. With the direct aid plan submitted by the city of Lawrence, we reduced, we were recommending a reduction of their reimbursement request of $44,207 for their downtown traffic strategy. We're recommending eliminating the remote video broadcast direct aid plan program. Related to the temporary campsite for people experiencing homelessness, my recommendation, and I can pop to that proposal if the commission wants, wants me to, is to reduce it, to not, to reduce it by 50,000 in hopes that the city of Lawrence helps, joins us in this challenge and that they match, that they, they come up with that $50,000 in matching funds to help us with this program. The specific $50,000 is related to utility extensions and utility services that will be needed for that campsite. So it's just a recommendation from staff that that might be a good place to start. And then the last part of the reduction to their direct aid plan is related to the digital equity expense request. And this is really, comes down to eligible expenses. So like I said, was we reviewed every line item and every direct aid plan when we got to this part of the direct aid plan for the city of Lawrence, there were a number of subscriptions that were in there for two years. We have had very clear guidance from the state that they will not accept, frankly, I'm not sure they're going to accept any subscription over past December at this point. So we've reduced those two-year subscriptions to one-year subscriptions. So really this cut of $17,000 is really related to those expenses were not eligible. For the city of Udora direct aid plan, we reduced their small business assistance program by $200,000. I mentioned last week that we recognized that there was a reduction needed for, to make sure there was some consistency between the cities in these plans. So we took a reduction there. You will see in your follow-up materials, which are on the website and commissioners received last night, an email from city manager Barack Matite about that program. So I highly encourage commissioners to take a look at that. And then we reduced half of the city of Udora transfer for telework infrastructure. It appeared to be similar to the city of Lawrence remote video broadcasting requests, so I eliminated, eliminated it from both places to be consistent between direct aid Any questions on the municipal plans before I move to the RSFs? Go ahead.
Sarah, when, so you're going to give us a review of everything and then we'll come back and discuss.
Yeah, but let me get you, I probably can just get you through these revisions to get to this 1.6 and then we can talk about it before we go into RSF4. So under RSF3, I'm sorry, RSF2, staff recommended a reduction to the Heartland Medical Clinic, Heartland Community Health Center request of $300,000 related to their capital request. There were a number of small miscellaneous adjustments in this category that were really related to, we found some places where requests came to us with more than 5% of administrative costs. So we made some small adjustments and that was $6,06300. And then we did find a duplicated error, a duplicated entry. So inside both the education entry for KU and inside RSF2's LMH Health entry, they both asked for $240,000 for the KU match for educational staff testing. We left it in KUs and RSF4, but we removed it from RSF2, from LMH Health. I have conferred with Beth Llewellyn, who was one of our leaders for RSF2, they, in the hurry and bustle to get this all submitted, it was submitted in both places. But it really is a tied project in between for both LMH Health and for KU. And then we, so that, that is a reduction of $546,000 from RSF2. Under RSF3, we reduced the hotel vouchers for individuals and families, families experiencing homelessness submitted by the Lawrence Community Shelter by $142,000. This is obviously something we can talk more about. We've been working with this program since March. My thought on the reduction was based off of what they've experienced to date in terms of expenditures. However, in, in all fairness, I know that their hope was to expand this program and try to allow more and because they have been so limited in the number of people that have been at the shelter, that the hope was that they could expand that program. I, we still believe they could do that somewhat with this $100,000 remaining, but, but it would be, remain to be seen if that's sufficient funds. Then if you'll remember commissioners, we had a $39,000 approximately surplus last, last week. So all of that together comes into 1.7, 1.1,690,760 that we are recommending be reallocated from these areas and placed into RSF1. Do you want to talk about those now before we get into RSF1 and 4? And I, let me say this, I fully anticipate commissioners may have other things you'd rather cut. And we can certainly, when we talk about RSF1, we can certainly talk about, would you rather talk about more things to cut first and, or more things to add? And we can decide which chicken and egg we want to start with in terms of how we approach that work.
I guess Sarah, you sort of recapped. I guess Sarah, you've sort of recapped everything but RSF4 and I, I suppose it would be my preference to hear RSF4 and then I think the commissioners might have
Great.
Some thoughts.
So when we, when we reviewed RSF4 last week, there were a lot of conversations about, boy, oh, boy, you know, school districts have had to submit, submit these requests before, you know, before they got guidance from the governor, before they got guidance from the state department of education, they didn't know if they were going to be hybrid in person or, or online learning. And we know that that will be, that kind of uncertainty will continue to follow us through the rest of the school year. And different districts have different needs and different districts are going to be putting together different plans that are appropriate for their district. So I, what I thought I heard was a desire to create some flexibility for districts in that. And, and we just really, and before this, you know, hindsight's 2020, we, we had school districts submit programs just like everybody else. And, and now where we are today, it, it seems to be in order to give districts the most flexibility, our staff suggestion is to switch to instead of a per, per program approval, approval process like the other RSFs, just inside K-12, that we would move to a per pupil funding block grant style program. And districts are used to this, they talk about their per pupil amounts all the time. We ran this past the stakeholders inside RSF4 for K-12. They seemed very supportive of this move. And so what you see here is if we ask for each district and, and school their, their pupil count. And then we took the existing funding that we had allocated for K-12. We didn't move any money in, we didn't take any money out. And we divided that proportionally based off the per pupil count. And then we came up with a new funding amount. So, and really in some cases, this just moved small pieces for some districts, but it did help us create some better equity, I would, I don't want to use the word equity, but some better consistency in terms of a funding strategy for the private schools. So we're not recommending any other changes to RSF4. And what I, what I'd like to do is if you guys are supportive of this approach, I guess I wanted to show it to you and see if you were supportive. If you are, what I would do then is, and I'm going to pull it up so you can see it because it's, what we have not done yet is gone all the way through the all programs document and adjusted that RSF summary in that manner. Because I, I didn't want to assume the commission would be supportive of the change, so I'll jump to that now. And then when you, when you come back on Friday, what you would see here, oh, I haven't shared it yet, sorry. Okay, so what you would, what, if the commission's supportive of that, we would leave Boys and Girls Club, childcare where the university's the same. And I'm going to move just for this for commissioners, because I think you're looking at my screen. No, you're not. So I'm going to make it a little smaller just so you can try to see the columns. Well, you can see this amount column and column F is the amount. We would adjust these, the plans for each of the K-12 organizations and we'll just, it'll have one line and it will say block grant. And it'll have a dollar amount. So instead of like, the first one that comes up here is USD, let's talk about 348. And you can actually see Brooke's already adjusted it a little bit there. She took out the individual lines for each program and she just left in $1 amount. And so let's talk a little bit about how this would be structured. Staff is already prepared in advance of this work. Like I said, we got over 50 organizations that we're going to have to develop agreements with on this and work quickly. So we already have a boilerplate agreement between this Douglas County and the organization as to how these funds have to be spent. Reminding everyone listening, normally Douglas County receives about $300,000 a year in federal funding in calendar year 2020, we will receive over $25 million. So we fully anticipate, we, we know we will be audited on these funds by our own auditor and possibly by the federal government and the state government as well. So we will have a number of those considerations in that agreement that they are, that they give us the information on a timely manner, we'll set up reimbursement schedules. And then for K-12, we would probably have under the, an amendment to it that basically outlines what their plan is. And, and the thought would be, is it would be flexible, that it could be used for any of the eligible expenses for that district depending on the needs of that district. So if they're hybrid, it could be used for PPE sanitation and social distancing measures. But if they, if they decide or they, because of increasing cases that they have to be online or distance learning the whole year, they could shift and pivot, which is, I hear a great word, education is using a lot these days, but pivot to distance learning and then they could use those funds for distance learning. And we've, we've talked about that internally. We believe we can, we have that flexibility inside our direct aid plan to structure the programs in that manner. Questions on that shift in approach?
So Sarah, we, does that work with the guideline? Because I, I think the guideline said that you had to be a governmental agency to have it directly flow to you. You're talking about it differently in this case?
So, under direct aid plans, what we would, and I believe in Brooke's on the line here and she can clarify if I got this wrong, I think, and this gets into the technicalities of how we put together this plan. So we believe we would put this as a transfer from Douglas County government to the entity, which gives us, it actually puts more of the onerous on us, but it gives some flexibility in how we, so it really becomes part of the county's direct aid plan, which would bolster ours substantially, but it gives us some flexibility to, to man it, how those funds are used. And we think we can do that for even a private school. If we find, and we're constantly asking questions of the state, if we find out that we can't structure it in that manner, I think we would just try to do our best to write a plan that says, you know, if, if, if situations were to change, that we could have the flexibility to adjust those things inside the plan. And, and I'm hopeful that the state would understand.
So, so you're not worried about this design with regard to private schools? Have you talked to any other counties about how they're doing private schools?
Well, I can tell you when I talk to other counties, they're not funding private schools at all. In many cases, and actually the guidance that came down from the state is that we're only, they really only asked us to share this with cities and public schools. So there has been some guidance on private universities, not to complicate matters, but since we have a public universe, two public universities and a private university in Douglas County, private universities are excluded, so not included in round two funding for higher education. Their really only chance for funding, I don't want to say only chance, but their most immediate chance for funding will come from counties in round one. We got a call from the governor's office today clarifying that. So we do, as, as the group can see here, we have a, we, we, in this recommended funding amount is the request from Baker University of $32,500. Now, so, but back to the question about private schools. That's certainly a choice, that if the commission was looking to make further reallocations to support other things, we have no obligation to fund private schools in this approach.
Sarah, are all of the private schools represented on this list or just ones who?
I, I believe, I'm, I'm, I'm going to believe that between Bishop Seaberry, Corpus Christi, St. John's and Veritas, that those are all of the private K-12 schools. Except, I mean, Rain Tree Martyrory did not apply, I know they have K-12. So no, but they did not request funding. And I, and I, if there's another small private, you know, Prairie Moon School, I think also has some K-12.
So Patrick, was your question whether these private schools would even be allowed in this? Or you're saying it because it would be Douglas County, it would be a transfer that would get ineligible?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, what, if we're applying that system to public schools, that we can do it for private schools as what, you know, that we're not, that we're, yeah.
We believe so at this time. Obviously that's a question we can try to get further guidance on. If not, if they come back and say you can't do it as a transfer, you've got to structure a program, we'll come back to you and we'll let you know, we'll, we'll figure it out here in the next day or two. Or it will get, we'll submit it to the state, they'll reject it and then we would have an opportunity to adjust it, figure out by then maybe folks would know more, okay, we know now we're a private school and we're definitely going to be hybrid. So we really do need the PPE. But the per pupil funding amount is a different strat, that's a totally different funding strategy. So I think if we can have agreement that the dollar amount is where we want it to be, or we feel that that is consistent, then I think, then hopefully staff can manage the PPE versus sanitation versus distance learning.
What's the preference of the commission? Do you want to dig into RSF4 and have that discussion now? Or would you like to talk about other groups and come back to it? Or do you have thoughts?
I would just assume dig in, I mean, to RSF4. I like the, the plan that they've come up with precisely for the reason that it's flexible for each district, because one district may not, may not meet in person, one may, so it gives them the ability to prioritize their spending and use it the way that it's going to be, best meet their needs. So I, I think as long as we're here, I would just assume, continue the discussion on it.
I like the per pupil funding. I assume that we would revisit some of the ones that were not per pupil funding, you know, that we would, I'd like to talk about some KUs requests and some things in there. And, and so.
Well, I think I'm looking for at this point in time is commission agreement that the per pupil funding for K-12 is the strategy and, and that we won't be looking inside those for a change to that funding formula. And then, and then we could certainly, and we could certainly talk about the rest of RSF4 at this time. If you want to, or we could go back to, I'd really kind of like to show you what we're at in RSF1. And then if we're going to talk about reductions throughout all RSF2, RSF3, RSF4 minus K-12, then we could, that might be better. So you could at least just see how that $1.7 million comes into the plan, into RSF1. Does that make sense? Or did I just confuse you?
Just listening, yeah, I think that's.
Makes sense?
Same way, I'd like to go back to RSF4 when we're talking about
But we're
Particular programs, but.
But we're supportive with the K-12 funding and we're not looking to adjust those any further.
Not yet.
Not yet. Yeah. I, I think
For now.
I'm supportive of the model. I think it gives, similar to Commissioner Drew, who said, those entities are changing so rapidly and I think it gives them some flexibility, which I'm sure would be appreciated. I'm glad to hear that when you reached out to the partners, they, they shared that that would work.
Great.
I think, thank you for, that was.
Thank you. Nancy, is your microphone on Nancy?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just not talking into it.
Okay. So are you ready for me to go back to RSF1? Okay, so I will go back to RSF1. Okay, so I will go back to RSF one. Be prepared for the for, for, for the commission and for those of you following along online. I really feel the best way to see each RSF is under our all programs tab by, it's the best way to see it by organization. What you see under the CRF allocation is by funding category, and that's how we have to submit it to the state. But I really feel like this is where you, what you want to look at. So what, what you have, if you remember, commission, from our, staff has identified $1,690,760 in reallocations. So when we came into RSF one, in addition to inserting those funds, staff looked at RSF one. And I, I feel like I need to go back and sort of restate some of the background related to RSF one for purposes of those listening at home. For every group, each RSF, education, economic, health and welfare, health and medical, and housing and human services, we asked each RSF to prioritize their requests. We also asked each organization submitting funding to complete an equity impact analysis tool. Inside the equity impact analysis tool were to be used in prioritization for RSF, for each RSF. In your packet commissioners, in your follow-up information, around page nine, I believe, is a memo from Diane Stoddard with the city of Lawrence and Steve Kelly as to how they prioritize RSF one. I want to be very clear here, because there seems to have been some miscommunication about this. What you see on this spreadsheet under column E, and I'm going to highlight it here, represents the priorities that came to the county from the RSF. So if it says high, it was prioritized high by the RSF coordinators. Nowhere inside this entire plan do we have a single recommendation for anything at this time that was rated medium or lower. So, because I want to remind everyone, we received 50 million in requests, we have 25 million to give out. So as staff looked to prepare these recommendations for the commission last week, we already had way, way over 25 million in what we could fund. So RSF one recommended these projects here as high, medium, and low, according to their criteria, which is outlined in the follow-up document from our RSF one coordinators. Then, even with the highs, like I said, the county was not able to fund all of them. I couldn't get that all fitted, fit into our 25 million. So then the county recommended changes in the funding amount. And we moved some of the projects that had been previously ranked high in RSF one to not recommend it. As you, and you can see here, I'm going to recommend, I'm going to highlight these three rows. These, these recommendations were recommended high by RSF one. Like I said last week, it was a rough cut. I did not, I could not financially get those into the 25 million. We had our conversation. And, and so at that point, as the commission, I really felt like, from what the commission was saying, is they appreciated the work that RSF one did to come up with these recommendations. However, when looking at it in the context of the total county plan, some other considerations needed to take place. So as staff, and I take responsibility for this, we made some further adjustments to what we're recommending for funding. We did it when it came to you on the fifth, and we're doing it again today for the 12th. And obviously, this is a commission decision, and we can change that. We can change these recommendations from here. So I want to walk you through these. You're going to notice that there are two less here than what you saw last week. Last week, inside RSF one, we had a recommendation from the Douglas County Community Foundation for a particular fund to help support the work of our hospitality, arts and culture, and restaurant industries. And that's to help the workers, and it's, it would be a fund that DCCF would set up to help those folks. RSF one really felt like that belonged in housing and human services. We, we agreed. Similar, there was a request from Lady Bird Diner for reimbursement of their community feeding program. It's really a community feeding program. It's not an economic development tool. To simplify matters, I moved that request and the money from it to RSF three. You remember when you looked at the summary sheet, RSF three went up? That's even though we cut the, the LCS motel program. It's because we took the money from here and moved it to there. So, so that we wouldn't have that complication of worrying about those two requests in here. Now, that's probably the last time I think we need to do that. Because as I've stated before, the RSF process is simply something that Douglas County used to develop this direct aid plan. The state of Kansas does not care about what RSF it's in. It just cares if we recommend it for funding. But I decided to just make, try to make life simpler and move it out. So then what is remaining, from what you saw last week to where we are today, was a request for On Guard LLC for a hand sanitizer project. This is a really interesting project that a local business is working on, changing their business model to produce hand sanitizer at a local level. It's economic development, it's, you know, a needed product for the pandemic. It's a minority-owned business. There's a lot of great strategies to it. However, this is also a really great project for RSF round two. There's tons of, there are, and I won't say tons, but there are, there is funding in round two for business development, business expansion, particularly local business expansion to help respond to COVID-19. And also reflections for trying to support minority-owned businesses in that manner as well. So the recommendation at this point, commission can change it, was to take some of the funding away from that project, to make it more of an economic stimulus project. I felt like this was something that was highly, so highly recommended by RSF one. It was important to keep it in there. But we backed out the salary costs on it. So as a commission can see here, it was originally $174,000. We reduced it down to 80, taking away the salary costs. In your packet, there is information from the applicant. I'm still hopeful that they could get other funding and that they could be successful with use of this. There is a bit of a risk, you know, if they don't get other funding, would they be able to do as much? Would they be able to be successful? So I, I do acknowledge that staff's taking a risk here by reducing this funding amount. But we felt like it was probably more appropriate, and given what the commission's done in the past, to sort of match stimulus funds and try to encourage that. So that's why staff recommended a change there. The next project related to the Peaslee Technical Training Center. The Peaslee Center had originally requested $400,000. They have already received some funds. They're rapidly working to try to help folks get training and redeploy and change their career field to work, to get trained, technical training. I lowered this amount simply because, just of concerns of could we get it all spent in this current year? In your packet, you have a response from Kevin Kelly about that. He's hopeful, I mean, obviously, he thinks like, he'd love to be able to spend it. However, you know, and he does, does say in the packet as to how many people have used those funds so far. There are workforce development funds in RSF two. It appears that they're going to come a different way, but they might still come to Peaslee. So, and, and we could get into that, but from what I'm understanding of round two is workforce development will go to like a, a business, and they're saying like, here, train my workers, retrain my workers to do this thing. And then there'd be funds provided, and then that could go to Peaslee. But at this point in time, with both the consideration of round two and the, and just the timing to get $400,000 spent this year, staff recommended reduction. The next three, we, what I'm going to say is they would be moved to group funding. Whatever sort of restaurant-based group funding model we come up with. This gets into a very difficult subject that we talked about last week. You know, we had some group funding, some umbrella requests from restaurant organizations, specifically the Lawrence Restaurant Association. And then we also had individual restaurants apply outside of that funding. I think that's a topic I want to hear the commission talk more about at this stage of developing our plan. Are, do you want to fund individual restaurants and businesses? Or do you want to try to lump funding in together to group plans? Where we can spend a little bit more time sharing what our priorities are for the funding with that? And then have a supplemental application process that would be managed by that umbrella organization to really help us come up with that strategy. But for now, I, that money didn't leave this RSF. It's just not recommended for individual funding of these three restaurants. And then there were no changes made to the arts, to the art center request, which is actually a number of organizations put together by the art center. And then you see here on line 11, this unallocated amount of 1.7 million, which would move our total funding amount up to 2.3. So at this point, does that make it clear kind of how we moved money in and what we did to the recommended projects? At this point, I didn't feel it was appropriate for staff to speculate on projects moving up into that. But I wanted to give you all a starting point to begin to be, to have some real dollars to work with in this RSF. And, and I want to state again, you know, we stated it last week, we knew this RSF needed additional funds. With our ability to just put together a plan for your rough draft review last week, I wasn't able to, to really get this RSF where I wanted to. I believe now with these funds, we're in a much better position. We may not be done, but we're in a much better position than we were this time last week. So at this point, I guess I would turn it back to the commission and ask if you want to talk about approach? If you have questions about what I've done, and you want to talk about how we're going to go through this? Do you want to go, do you have some big picture thoughts about umbrella versus individual? Or do you just want to kind of talk about which projects are most important to you in this area?
Well, I, I'd start and say that I think part of the solution for, for the issues we've seen with RSF one may be solved in the same way that we handled K through 12, is that kind of the group approach, the kind of the more. Right. I, I do think that, I think it's really important that this money be spread around. Not, we can't solve everybody's problem, but we can throw a lot of businesses a lifeline. And a lot of individual businesses hopefully will apply for the round two funding, which, you know, is, is more substantial. So I, I'm in favor of taking another look at our groups, the LRA, DLI, and the, the Watkins, which includes several entities, as well as the Mammoth application, which includes several entities as a kind of a core effort to, I think absolutely we have to recognize the importance of this sector. To, you know, as an economic engine, as a kind of a, the heart and soul of who we are and, and what makes us feel whole as a community, and, and what, what causes people to want to come here and, and keep us going. As well as the, just the fact, recognize the fact that these are huge employers. And so the more we can do to help them keep their doors open and survive this, the fewer people will have to support on RSF three with social service funds. I just think we, we can't ignore the fact that there are just, you know, it's just a huge sector that, that will, if we, if we don't find a way to be more equitable, and I think more generous in our funding, I think we'll, we'll regret it. So I am so grateful to you for finding a way to add $1.6 million to the tally as a beginning. I, I think there is more money to be added, and I'm happy to talk about that in a while. But I think this is a great start, and so I'm really appreciative of that effort. And I'm really, I, I guess I want to extend kind of heartfelt, not apologies, because everyone's doing the very best they can. They really are. But just to, to acknowledge the heartache that has come, you know, with the publication of a program that was not final, that awarded money to individual businesses who maybe for a little bit counted on that, and, and other businesses who were left out, who, who really felt the, the hurt of that. So, so, you know, it's one of those things, we'll get past it. I think we, I, I suspect in our conversations will, you know, well, I'll just say for myself, I, I think that we've got to find a way to find more money and, and fund more entities, even if we can't fund them fully, we just have to.
I, I agree with Commissioner Thelman, you know, I, we need to find a way to help as many businesses and of our community members who are affected by this as possible. You know, looking through it, you know, some of, it's interesting what some people requested and what, you know, what some people didn't request. Some of it to me seemed a little extreme, some of it seemed pretty minimal. So I'd like to find a way that we can, you know, help as many of them as possible with some of the just basic, whether it's just added expenses of trying to stay in business through PPE and to-go packaging, or whatever it is. But help as many as we can. And I, on another subject on here, I have a question about the Lawrence Humane Society Crisis Pet Retention Fund. Because to me, that doesn't seem, this doesn't seem like the right place for it. Sorry.
So, yes, and as we stated last week, so RSF one was the last RSF to complete their process. So they got a bit of a catch-all of, and, and their application was very public, so they got a catch-all. So that was not recommended high by, it was evaluated by RSF one, but it was not recommended high. I, it could, at this point, like we said, it doesn't really matter what RSF they're in. The question just would be, does the commission want to fund it and find funds for it? So if we wanted to go through, you know, if, if, and maybe, you know, this reminds me a little bit of our budget process, where each commissioner I know probably has some requests inside RSF one that are, you know, that they would like to advocate for funding for. I don't know that we want to go through every line item, but maybe we, if, you know, and I want to keep an eye on the time here, we're at 10 till 5. And we do have a, we need to stop for a 5:30 meeting, but we will reconvene in that meeting to have this conversation. We could just go through and, and try to go down the list as if each commissioner had ones that they particularly wanted to get funded from here. To me, that would be, and if there's consensus, then we can keep a running tally to sort of see how much, how much of the 1.7 is unallocated, and if, if that's sufficient, or if we need to go find additional reallocations elsewhere in the direct aid plan to move to here. But you're correct, like, there, I'm sure, I'm sure all of you have a couple in here that you'd like to draw attention to.
Sorry. I was just kind of curious, because it, it just didn't seem like it was in the right category. But that, that makes sense now, and I understand, and I, I know from reading the memo from Diane, that it was kind of like, you know, we, we judged or rated this one based on the RSF one, but it doesn't really fit in RSF one, so. But now that you say it doesn't matter where it is, then I, I guess it, it just probably needs to be reviewed on its own merit and not based on some category that. But I, I do have a question, because to me,
But I do have a question because to me, it could affect part of our discussion in our 5:30 meeting regarding the budget. And that's the Douglas County Historical Societies. Because one of the things we talked about during our budget discussions was how we could help those very small organizations and the amazing, you know, very necessary work that they do on a shoestring budget, how they've been impacted. So I didn't know if that's something we need to talk about to see if they're going to get funding in the CARES Act or if it's something that we need to discuss when we get to our budget discussion tonight.
Isn't that part of the Watkins umbrella?
But it's under not recommended.
Well, I think all of that's up for discussion. I'm trying to find it.
It's up under line 23. Is it 23? Okay, thank you. So that's a good point and I could go to that request if you want me to or just highlight it here. So, yeah, it's chicken or egg. We could, we could certainly figure out if there's CARES funding. I would say, you know, when we get to the budget, commissioners know this from, we have way more flexibility with our budget than I do with the CARES Act. So I do think that if you want to make CARES Act decisions and there's something like, I will tell you, the $200,000 in cuts from Douglas County's direct aid plan, it will hit our general fund. Those are all expenses that I believe we need to incur. So I think it's, that conversation is larger than just Watkins. My plan would be to come back to you once CARES Act is done and say, and say, hey commissioners, we reduced our direct aid plan by $200,000. We need to figure out how we're going to, you know, pay for these expenses inside our general fund. So, and, and we have the ability to do that with our budget to make adjustments, you know, if that's what the commission wants. So obviously, we want to maximize and use CARES funding in the way that we want to. I'm not really answering your question directly. But I do think that even if we don't solve it tonight, Commissioner, we have flexibility inside of our budget to go back and address that. But I do know that this was something, even in your budget process, the commission expressed a lot of interest in trying to fund heritage and cultural institutions. It's a particular area of emphasis for Douglas County and I think it's totally appropriate for CARES Act funding. It's, if it gets moved up into a funded category. But if you just feel like it's too tight and we can do it elsewhere on our own, we have that option as well. Okay, I just wanted to bring it up because it was part of the budget discussion and so...
And there were a number of... I'm glad you brought that up. I guess I was in reading the Watkins group application, I thought that that was, the heritage societies were supportive. Sustainability was part of that package.
One of my priorities as I looked through them was a collaborative approach. And whenever I saw that, I thought, I think we can take the most advantage of the dollars that we have available through a collaborative approach. And I think that's what Commissioner Thelman was sort of talking about, this umbrella agency. But my question for you, Sarah, is do we feel like, I mean, we look at the Lawrence Restaurant Association and their program included all restaurant workers countywide. Do we feel like we have those organizations that can step up? Or do we need to manage that? So, for example, I mean, is there an umbrella organization for arts, culture, hospitality? Because some of these businesses that did not, were not recommended for funding by, for funding by the RSA, RSF, are not in some of those sectors. And I, and I also didn't see anything on there that I thought, well, that's the group that will be the umbrella organization if we, if we say, look, we're going to give this amount. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, and I think there's, so there's, I really feel like a model here. And when we talked about this a little bit last week, I mean, RSF3, our housing and human services sector has really come together and has developed a number of collaborative approaches. So like you look at the tenants to homeowners and family promise requests. Those, those funds are not just going to tenants to homeowners and family promise clients. They're going to go to the entire community. But they're, those organizations are going to act on behalf of other human service providers in the community at large. So I do think, you know, the Arts Center, for example, could act as that umbrella organization for the agencies that they've outlined. They have a small administrative fee that they're tacking on, gives some of their administrative staff some valuable work in this process. And it really is going to help us build that muscle of collaboration that we've seen really work really effectively now inside of RSF3 and RSF2. I mean, you've heard me say more than once that I think that a lot of our work on behavioral health really prepared this community well for this pandemic. And our partners inside RSF2 work very well together. And because they've, you know, exercised those muscles of collaboration. So I think we need to make sure that organization is comfortable with it. I don't think we should just volunteer an organization to be an umbrella organization unless they're, unless they're asking to be. But I think there are many of those organizations that are willing to do so. And we can structure the agreement so that it is more open than it might appear. So for example, like with the Lawrence Restaurant Association, they, I know from conversations with them, they would open it up, application processes to people more than just their membership. We're simply asking, we would simply be asking them to serve as an umbrella organization, a convener, a coordinator, an administrator for a program. And I think your direction to that group as to how you would like that program to be run and administered can be put into an agreement that they agree to. And if they say, well, we, you know, maybe there's some negotiation there. Maybe they say like, this isn't appropriate for us and we could find ways to do that. But, so I think it's possible, I think it really is possible for organizations that don't right now look to you like a traditional convener.
I would speak to that a little bit in terms of conversations I've had with some of these groups. And I think the LRA stands ready to do that. And they have proven themselves in a, in very short order to be able to manage a, you know, what was originally the relief fund for the service industry workers. That was their baby in the beginning. And, and also I think Watkins has, is very sophisticated in its management of large funds. And I would think the same would be true of DLI and...
I think it really could depend on the area. You know, we have, we have a heritage conservation coordinator who has built-in relationships. So like on that one, I, if Watkins hadn't stepped up, I do feel like Douglas County could have been a convener for that conversation and we could have applied for it under our direct aid plan. But I'm really glad Watkins did. I think it helps build community-based collaboration that we're helping to fund and promote. I'm not saying if the commission felt like there just wasn't a good fit for a particular program, I do think the county could, we certainly could fill that role. I just would prefer to not do it with 25% of the program dollars. Just because our staff will really still be struck, we're really going to have the burden of making sure all these funds, the checks come in and out quickly, that receipts are kept, that we are monitoring that accounting and applying to the state for those funds. The county is receiving no, we are not asking for any administrative assistance in that, in that work. We want to try to get as much as possible, these funds out to the community to do work in the community. But we certainly, if there was, if, you know, I don't want to say no, that the county couldn't do that.
Like to my point, DLI, you've brought that up. You know, DLI is really focused on downtown Lawrence. Would they be willing to expand beyond downtown Lawrence? Or would the chamber take that on, you know, as a, and those may be conversations we can have before Friday. But I just, I think there's a, there's an opportunity there to strengthen our community and take advantage of collaboration and collaborative decision-making. Because I think that's sort of what I heard and, you know, and I think it's sort of reflected, very grateful for the work of the RSF and the work that they did. But I think to your point, Sarah, what we saw from human services seemed a little more coordinated just because they've been working together.
Can I say one thing about the need to reach out to the business communities in the other small, in the small towns? I think one way, I think there might always be some reticence and some disconnect with Baldwin, Udora, LaCompton coming to Lawrence or somehow getting connected to programs in Lawrence. And I think one way to potentially solve that and maybe simplify things for, for DLI would be to go back to the municipality allocations. Because Udora, I don't know that, I think that's a place where we need to look again, that kind of more equitable or per capita fund, whatever. But like Udora has now some money set aside for economic support of their business sector. Baldwin, honestly, I talked to the administrator, didn't know they could ask. And I'm sure that LaCompton never thought to. But, but I know that Baldwin City would be willing to and very pleased to operate some kind of business support program modeled after what Udora is doing. I don't know that we can give, you know, all of them as much money as, I think proportionally, we could come up with a fund, some amount that Baldwin could use for its business sector, Udora could use for its business sector, LaCompton if it's willing to manage some money. I don't know that we can, you know, we need a longer conversation in terms of the amount of money. But, but that would be one way to assure that those locales who know their business as well and where the businesses are comfortable with them, you know, kind of let each town manage its own. That would be one way.
So if that was something that, as a, at the end of this conversation, the end tonight, if you decided that you were supportive of trying to expand, and I just want to be clear, over the last several days, I've told many organizations, it's too late to submit your application. I just want to be upfront with the commission that that's what I've said. It's obviously within your power and ability to decide, we want to create a new program in partnership with the city. But I, if, I don't want anyone coming to you and saying, the administrator said you couldn't apply anymore and then you gave money to Baldwin that they didn't ask for. I think we can do that. But what I'd like to do is that at the end of the day, today, if you're supportive of that notion of, hey, we want to give some funding to the other two small cities to support their retail and restaurants sectors, I would need, I would go to them tomorrow and say, I need a direct aid plan today, by the end of business, for consideration by the commission next, on Friday. Because they would have to fill out their own separate tab and get it to us so we could submit it to the state. But that can certainly happen tomorrow. I just want to be clear about the process steps that would have to take to make that work.
I just think it's, it's, it's one of the unfortunate things of this process where every, you know, the outreach was tremendous, depending on the, kind of the level of sophistication and the number of staff people, the, you know, the ability to multitask and all of that. I just, you know, I just, we can discuss further, obviously. But I just think it's important that we don't advantage one community over another just for lack of, you know, the...
And we saw that throughout, you know, some cities requested payroll expenses, some didn't. So this is, this is no different from that. And I do think that the other, the other option would be to not have any specific cities and just ask that all, you know, economic funds be open to the whole community. I totally hear you that that's hard for small cities to come up to, you know, to always think that they're going to get equal representation. So I think either strategy is totally allowable and appropriate under this plan. It just depends on what the commission wants to do.
Thank you.
So Sarah, I'm sort of wondering, as if a way forward, because we need to take a break here, is to maybe hold on this and look at some of the other RSFs and the municipalities to determine if there would be dollars we want to reallocate and then come back to this. Is that...
That's certainly a strategy. Yeah, if you want to go through and... Yeah, I think if, if it's the goal of the commission to try to make this program as precise as possible in those other RSFs and I think we certainly can. I have some, also some, some other things I could suggest to start the conversation off. If we did that at 5:30, to, if we were going to look at other areas where if you wanted to go another layer down to reallocate a little further, I could certainly, I also have some thoughts to that as we've tried to prepare our staff. So we could start that way and then just sort of see if there's additional funds that can be. I guess I just don't want to presume though, that you may say, I don't think this is a particular project I'm interested in funding that would automatically go to RSF1.
Fair enough, yeah.
You all may say, I'd rather give it to Boys and Girls Club inside RSF4 so that they could do more work in the community.
I wasn't making that assumption. I realized it sounded that way, but...
Yeah, I don't want anyone online to assume that we're just going to comb through all the RSFs to reallocate it to economic. It would just be whether or not you think it's a request the commission's supportive of including in their plan.
Okay.
I think that gives us a good game plan for what happens after 5:30.
Yeah. Okay, well, then we will adjourn until our business meeting that begins at 5:30. Thanks for all of those who joined us online. Just reminder, we don't take public comment during our study sessions, but we will have opportunities for public comment in our general business meeting. We are adjourned until 5:30.
This will be on the same Zoom, correct? We're just going to halt. And, and so for those of you that are on our Zoom panel, we're just going to stop recording. You can stay on or you can come back to this link at 5:30 and we will begin our business session. Sorry.
Thank you. That's great.